Oh, that's good.
Yes, okay. I gotta put this thing down. I had to pass it out to Carney. Okay. Good morning. And how are you this morning before Christmas coming up? Welcome to the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners meeting. We do appreciate your attendance and for the viewers, we do thank you for tuning in. For introductions, on my left is Commissioner Deb Shore and Commissioner Larry Hudgens, and on my right is Vice Chair and Commissioner Todd Wilton and Commissioner Bill Avery. I'm Commissioner Roma Amundson, Chair of the Board. And assisting us this morning, we do have Dave Durbin of the County Attorney's Office, Kelly Lundgren and Dan Nolte of the County Clerk's Office, and Carrie Egan of the County Administrative Office. So will you join me now in saying the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and thank you so very much. And Mr. Clerk, will you begin the agenda, please?
A copy of Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed today's open meeting is available from the County Clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE dot gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approve the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Monday, December 12th, 2016, and this is for the joint public hearing.
Move approval of the minutes?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of the joint public hearing. Any discussion, any corrections? Please call the roll.
Avery? Yes. Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. One B is approved with the minutes of the Board of Commissioners meeting held on Tuesday, December 13th, 2016.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of last week's Board of Commissioners meeting. Are there any corrections? Please call the roll.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number two, Acclaims. Approve of all claims processed through December 20th, 2016.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve all claims processed through today. Are there any correct, any additions or corrections? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Number three is a special presentation, Visitor's Improvement Fund Grant Contract in amount of $2,200 to the Lincoln Children's Museum for recreation of a 360-degree view of the Children's Museum on their website. Marissa Gil Kaiser, Lincoln Children's Museum, Lynn Ireland, Visitors Promotion Committee Chair, and Jeff Moll, Convention and Visitors Bureau Executive Director.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Merry Christmas, early wishes, right?
Yes, thank you.
'Tis the season. I'm glad it's warm outside, right? This is all good. Jeff Moll, Convention and Visitors Bureau, and I want to personally thank all of you during this, this year end. It's a good time to be in front of you, and, and thank you for your support of tourism. Uh, it's been an incredible year for us, Convention and Visitors Bureau wise, and I think what we're gonna hear today is just the amazing generosity that comes out of the Visitor Improvement Fund to help improve our attractions and, and continue to build Lincoln as a destination. A couple highlights for us, July and December, or July and September, were the largest ever lodging tax collections for Lancaster County since the inception of collecting the tax. So, we are doing amazing things in this community. When I say we, it's not just us, it's our hotels, our attractions, it's the, um, everybody that says hi to a visitor on the road, maybe puts a, a quarter in their meter, which is illegal to plug a meter, but we like when people are generous. But, the Children's Museum, Lynn Ireland's here as well from, um, uh, her role with, uh, on the, on the Board of the Visitors Promotion Committee. But, we're sitting here just days away from being 2017, and if you remember the Lonely Planet ranking of Lincoln as the number three place to visit in 2017, it's because of the two of these individuals and everybody else out there. So, I'm so proud of where we are today, so proud of where we're going in 2017. I fully anticipate we'll have just as successful of a year, if not better, looking forward. So with that, I'll turn it over to Lynn, our Chair of the Visitors Promotion Committee.
Good morning. It's a pleasure to talk with you today about a wonderful proposal from the Lincoln Children's Museum, which is one of the star attractions that Lincoln offers to visitors. The Children's Museum proposed a request for $2,200 to fund a 360-degree view of each floor of the museum. This is something that would be in addition to the Children's Museum website, that would allow visitors who are considering coming to Lincoln, to the Children's Museum, to get a 360 view of all the wonderful opportunities for intergenerational interaction that the Children's Museum allows. The Visitors Promotion Committee was pleased to recommend this to you, and particularly in light of the fact that the Lincoln Children's Museum is using this technology addition to a much larger branding and marketing investment that it's making. And with that, I will turn it over to the expert.
Thank you so much, Lynn and Jeff. You guys are wonderful advocates for Lincoln, and I love Lincoln, and working at the Children's Museum, and being such an advocate for this city and for the families in this city. Um, so really what the museum is asking for is a chance to share the growth that we've had. In the last five years, we've actually renovated more than 70% of our 23,000 square feet of exhibit space, and we wanna show it off. Um, we really wanna be able to share that with people, not only in Lincoln, but outside of Lincoln, so they know that they should come and visit, that their families really have a unique opportunity to see such a large museum that's really dedicated to the development of children. Um, so this is just one of those opportunities that we have with the Visitor Promotions Committee to do something that we might not be able to build into our regular budget, but is something that's gonna be such a huge boost to us, um, to bring in those out-of-city, um, locate, um, visitors, and to be able to showcase what we've done in the last few years and what we're continuing to do. We actually have scheduled this for February, cause we're building another new exhibit in January. So, um, there's so much going on, and we just wanna be able to share that with everyone. So that's really what this is about.
You had an example to show us at the Visitor Promotion Committee. It was kinda like a, a flyover, but a fly-in. You know, you're going down the hallways and kind of in and around the exhibits. So as opposed to still photography, much more engaging for people to get excited about visiting.
Yeah, we'll actually connect right to the Google Maps. So when you're on the outside of the building, you can click in, and you'll be able to really walk through every piece of the building. We've already met with a couple different organizations that do this kind of technology. They talked about where they would place the cameras and how they would be able to get all of the exhibits included, cause that is kind of difficult. Um, but they have a map and a plan of how to do that. So you can actually just walk through, and you can see every nick and cranny of all the exhibits that we have on all three floors. Um, so it's really gonna give such a better perspective of what it is that we have to offer than just any kind of normal picture that we could take.
Okay, well, I, I would like to say one thing, you know, when our kids were small, we took them to the Children's Museum, and I now look forward to bringing grandchildren to the Children's Museum. And there is one thing that I am always impressed with, the constant improvements that you're doing. The, it's just been an impressive development over the years, and this is certainly one of the, one of the additions that's going to be great. So thank you for your work on that. Any other comments? Let's go on to 3A then.
This is new business, Visitor's Improvement Fund Grant Contract in amount of $2,200 to the Lincoln Children's Museum for recreation of a 360-degree view of the Children's Museum on their website. The term of the contract is January 1st, 2017 through February 28th, 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay.
And I have one question. So the contract is very short, January 1st through February 28th, so the work will all be done within two months for sure.
Yes, we've already talked to the different companies involved, and we can get it done in February. As I said, we wanna get that other exhibit done beforehand, but we would be able to do it in February.
Okay, any further questions? Okay, please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you. Merry Christmas.
Four B is a resolution in matter of designating banks as depositories for Lancaster County for 2017.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we approve this resolution in the matter of designating banks. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudgens?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. C is a resolution adopting the Comprehensive Plan Amendment Number 160005 as of the new Lincoln Lancaster County 2040 Comprehensive Plan with amendments.
Good morning. My name is Richard Schmeling, and I addressed you at the joint session with the City Council. And of course, that, that ended up sort of being kind of squeezed because of time constraints.
And I do apologize.
Right. Um, I did attend the City Council meeting last night and made some additional comments. The City Council, I think adjourned, according to the best of my information, about 12:42 a.m. It was a long meeting. And there were some good additional comments about the comp plan and the long-range transportation plan. What I didn't get a chance to tell you in my remarks the other day is that in addition to my education at the University of Nebraska, after I received my law degree, I was in the U.S. Army Transportation Corps. Went to the Transportation Corps Basic Course, Fort Eustis, Virginia, studied all modes of transportation. And I've been a lifelong student of transportation ever since. The, uh, City Council did not vote last night on the Comprehensive Plan. That will be done, as I understand it, in a week. And Cindy Lamb, uh, has some, uh, language changes that she's going to propose. I have those, but, uh, they didn't really debate them very much last night. So that kinda leaves you up in the air, because what we need is we need for both groups to approve the same plan in the same language. The message that I'd like to give you is very simple, and that is, you cannot pave your way out of congestion. All the cities in the United States have learned that lesson already. So what we have in Portland, in New York City, in Washington, D.C., and a whole bunch of metropolitan areas, some the same size as Lincoln, is we have, uh, promotion of public transportation as a way of easing congestion. And, uh, there's a study by the Texas Transportation Institute that indicates that by changing only 3.8% of the people from their cars to public transit, there's a noticeable reduction in congestion and a, a, a shorten, shortening of the commute time. The most recent study that I became aware of, and this just came out, is from the American Public Transportation Association. And I have a summary, which will be handout to each of you. It indicates that there's a strong safety component to, uh, public transit. And, uh, basically what it found is that you are 90% less likely to be involved in an accident if you're riding on public transportation as opposed to driving your car. Or, in other words, you're 10 times more likely to be in an accident in your car than you are using public transit. Now, I realize in the county, uh, you don't have a lot to do with Startran. You do have a rural van run through the agency on the aging, so we do have public transit out in the county. Uh, there's been a last-minute move to try to move funding from trails and Startran to, um, street and road repair. My organization, Citizens for Improved Transit, is strongly opposed to that. Uh, the amount of money that would be moved is teeny tiny. Uh, it wouldn't have much of an impact on being able to fix our streets and roads, but what it would do is it would result in an 8% decrease in the funding for Startran. And there's some legal questions as to whether you can even divert the funds, because they're earmarked for transit and for trails, not for street construction. So when the plan comes before you in final form, I would hope that it would not include a shift of funds from trails and public transit to street construction. And that's my basic message here today.
Are there any questions? All right. Well, thank you for coming up again.
Thank you. And I'm gonna stand here a minute and fill my name in.
Good morning, David Carey with the Planning Department.
Good morning, Dave.
Uh, I think I'll just take this opportunity to kind of get you up to date on where we're at with the process, so that we're on the same page, and then be available to explain and answer questions based on the motions to amend. The City Council did have a very long meeting last night, uh, but they did take action on the Comprehensive Plan. They did adopt it unanimously seven to zero. Uh, as part of that action, they did adopt unanimously each time seven to zero, the five motions to amend that were presented by Cindy Lamb. I believe you have copies of those amendments in front of you. Uh, I think I, what I'd like to do is, um, first contextual, by the way, Paul Barnes is here for any other part other than transportation that you were just talking about. I know that we have a lot of focus on the transportation chapter, so I, uh, that's what I'm here for, first for. Where we're at is that because the City Council has now acted, uh, on the plan, um, basically we're a week later than where we thought we would be. So that's fine. Uh, we needed that extra time to get some things worked out. What I, uh, propose to you is to take action today on the plan. Uh, we had a lengthy hearing, uh, last Monday, a joint hearing. I had a lot of good discussion and, uh, questions answered. Uh, it's always our intent and, and desire to have both the city and the county to adopt the same plan. So, uh, that is what I propose to you today as well. So what I'm suggesting is that you take action on all five of those amendments that were adopted last night by the City Council. I'll just walk through those motions, just so you have some background and why they were proposed, um, and, um, just some explanation. Motion to amend number one, that is, um, on cha, on page 10.2 of Chapter 10. Uh, and it says, "While this plan is intended to guide future decisions regarding the city's transportation systems development, it is merely a guide and is subject to changes to meet future community needs." Uh, I think, basically what this is saying is, it's, it's kind of stating the obvious. The, the Comprehensive Plan is a guide. That is essentially what it is, uh, put together for. It is to provide a vision and some, and context for us moving forward with policies. It is not law, it is not like the zoning code. Uh, so this is basically stating the obvious, but it was something that was desired from, uh, the Council to, to have clarification. Move on to motion to amend number two. That is on, uh, page 10.4 of, of Chapter 10 of the Comprehensive Plan. Uh, what you see is some strikeouts there, where it strikes out, "As fuel costs continue to rise, the need for trans, transportation options as well as lifestyle options becomes more urgent." Uh, and then it, uh, explained, what moves on to say, "It is likely that personal vehicle will continue to be the dominant form of transportation for the foreseeable future. However, if fuel costs rise, the option of using alternative modes such as transit bicycles and walking for some trips may become more important to some," striking out everyone. Uh, I think, you know, I, I think part of this is, I, I spoke with Councilmember Lamb on this specifically. The information about fuel, fuel costs rising was more, um, applicable five years ago. Uh, this is a carryover language, so, uh, I agreed with her that this was a little bit out of date, so the change is, is very appropriate. Motion to amend three is found on page 10.25 of Chapter 10. Um, what it does is it strikes out the word "major" and inserts "primary" as far as the responsibility of a long-range transportation plan is the operation and maintenance of the new and existing street and roadway system. Again, I think that, uh, the intention of "major" was effectively the word "primary." I think there was a, a desire to have a different word use there. Um, it is, um, pretty obvious that, that is the primary purpose of the plan, as 80% of the funding that's proposed moving forward is for the road program. Motion to amend number four is found on, uh, 10.35 and 10.36 of, of the Transportation Chapter. Uh, this gets into the, um, topic of complete streets, and there was a desire from the Council to amend this language. Basically, um, as you read through that, uh, really to kind of, um, I would say, point out what is really the intent of the Complete Streets Program, which is that not every single street will necessarily have all aspects of complete streets on every single street. Um, that has been our process and our approach to that, ever since it's been, uh, a policy that we've been working with. Uh, what this language does is it, it kind of, um, points out specifically that that is the case, and that not every street, um, needs or perhaps should have all different facets of a complete street. Um, and that's really the, kind of the succinct way of pointing out what those, that language change includes. And then the final, uh, motion to amend number five, uh, that is found on page 10.50 of Chapter 10. Um, and that inserts the language of "Expectations contained within the LRTP technical report do not in any way compel members of future city government to raise revenues to meet said expectations." Uh, this is the, kind of the crux of probably the main, um, topic that's been, been discussed over the last two weeks or so. And that is, um, some concern with how the plan assumes certain increases in revenues, uh, moving forward. Specifically, this really was highlighted by the wheel tax assumptions, and that assumption in the plan does say that every five years, beginning in 2021, so five different times out to 2040, the wheel tax is suggested in the plan to increase $5, those, each of those five years. Um, I think it does point out, um, it's a, the reason why that assumption is, is in the plan is because it's based on historical trends and how that revenue source has increased fairly regularly. Um, that is kind of how we establish our revenue streams and assumptions in the plan. So it is a, it's a, it's an assumption that's valid, uh, in the way the federal government looks at this. When it gets to the LRTP side of this, that's something that they accept. And is a way for us to put together the future revenue streams and understand what type of money we'll have. The plan has never, um, been a, a document that says that shall happen. Um, that, again, getting back to the language about this being a guide and a policy guide. So, uh, this again, I think is to a degree stating the obvious, but it was a desire for some clarity that, that this does not mean that we're going to increase any of those revenue streams as suggested. I would point out, though, that the, the issue of the need for revenue and the ability to get more projects done is a very real topic that needs continued discussion. Um, so, I would say that the, the topic of trying to find more revenue in whatever form or fashion is something that we need to get into. So, with that, I'll answer any questions that you have.
Okay, any questions? Yes, Todd?
Just a quick question about the relationship between the LRTP, Long Range Transportation Plan, and the Comprehensive Plan for 2040. I, I know that, I mean, they're connected, but can you provide more detailed explanation? Cause I think for a lot of people, there's some confusion about it.
Yes, and I appreciate the question and the opportunity to try to explain that. The Comprehensive Plan, Chapter 10, is, it's the transportation chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. So the Comprehensive Plan, a big topic, but not the only topic of the Comprehensive Plan is transportation. It's very important for our community. It's one of those kind of nuts and bolts type of topics that need to be addressed in the Comprehensive Plan. That is what the City Council acted on and approved last night, and what you're being asked to act on today. Um, the LRTP, the Long Range Transportation Plan, is a separate document that goes through a federal process in order to qualify Lincoln and Lancaster County for federal funding for transportation programs. Uh, that document is effectively the same information from Chapter 10, the transportation chapter of the Comprehensive Plan. That has a separate tract for approval, and what we have, uh, readjusted is our action date of January 13th for, through the MPO process, the Metropolitan Planning and Optimization Process for, for that plan adoption. The people that act on that are the Chair and Vice Chair of the City Council, the Chair and Vice Chair of the County Board, the Mayor of Lincoln, as well as the Department of Roads Director. Those are the voting members of that body. And so that action by that body will be on January 13th, and it is effectively the same information, but it is a separate document per federal regulations. Um, so that is the main difference of what we have. Similar to how we want the City Council and the County Board to take action on the same plan, if possible, if there aren't any major differences between the two elected bodies, we also want to have, and historically have had, the same plan adopted as the LRTP. So for, for the qual, for consistency's sake and policy, um, moving forward, we do want all of those bodies to act on the same document, uh, if it's possible.
Larry?
I wanted to comment the other evening on the, or the other day on the, uh, at the hearing, but, um, you ran out of time and you had to keep things going. Uh, the question that I had at that time, and, uh, this, as a Chair and a Vice Chair set on, uh, on that committee, which I sat on for many, many years, I've always been concerned about one thing. Are we getting the quality of road produced that we actually need? And I'll specifically point out to the overpass at 27th Street, 27th and Fair. Uh, being a farmer and hauling in grain to AGP there for many years, we were so thrilled to have that overpass, so we didn't have to fight those railroad tracks and the lineups there. But I think that viaduct only lasted 20-some years. And then I, I go that, uh, look at that in contrast to the viaduct on, uh, the Havelock Viaduct on Old Highway 6, which has been there for over 50 years, and it went, and that was there even before the interstate went in, and that one is still there. So, are we doing enough to test the concrete? Are we pouring too much in the winter time and, and not paying attention to freezing or something? I'm really concerned, uh, the cost of these roads has gone up, but it doesn't seem like they last as long as they used to. And I would hope that in the future, this board and, and the rest will really take a good, hard look and spend more money on testing and supervision when those roads are being made, so that we get more long life out of them. That's my nickel's worth.
I appreciate the comment.
But Todd, you had another point?
Yeah, just to follow up on that explanation, which is both the LRTP and a comp, those are plans. They, they're not, approval of the, of both will not bind future governing bodies to... to tax increases or any of the assumptions that, I mean, it's just what it is, as a plan.
Right. Yeah, it certainly does not bind any elected official body to do any revenue or tax increases, as stated. It does provide a direction on what we intend to do. I think that needs to be pointed out and is important. Otherwise, we really don't have a direction to take. That's why we feel it's important to have a comprehensive and an LRTP. On the LRTP side, what we also need to just keep in mind is that the projects and programs that are identified in that plan are what qualify for funding moving forward for federal purposes. So if a project is not in the plan, unless it's amended into the plan, we wouldn't have the wherewithal to actually, you know, put that project forward and have it approved and move forward for funding and implementation. So we do use especially the project lists for trails and for roads as the very real guide of what projects move forward and which ones don't. So I mean, it is, it's important in that sense, especially on the LRTP side.
Right. So I mean, like you said, both these documents operate essentially as guideposts for where we're going. So whether it be the county board, the city council, if there's something that they need to fix, I mean, they can use this document as a, I guess, to determine where they're going. But in order to get the funding from the federal and state government, it has to be amended.
Correct. Yes. And I guess another way to think about this is that we do, at least every five years, update these plans. And as you know, we come forward with individual comprehensive plan amendments and even LRTP amendments when necessary. Think of including the South Beltway as a funded project. That was a big amendment that happened since the last time we updated the plan. So we do update the plan when it's appropriate and when it's needed, so that it's a document that's functional.
Any further comments? Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else who would like to speak? Okay.
I would move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. That we approve the resolution adopting the comprehensive plan amendment. Is there any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Well, I'm going to just take a little bit different tack, and I do understand that this is a plan for the future direction. However, I've been contacted by many constituents over the past week or so, indicating, you know, that their concern about the potential of future taxes. And I realize that this is very much a symbolic vote, but I do want to give them the understanding that their voice has been heard, so I will say no.
Motion carries four yes, one no. Next is new business 4D, annual salary for Katie Jaime Choi, Lancaster District Court Law Clerk, $44,343, effective January 9, 2017. Choi will work six hours per day from January 9 through March 29, 2017, and will be paid on an hourly basis at $21.31. She will begin full-time employment on March 30, 2017.
Well, good morning. I'm Jared Gavin with District Court. We're here to ask for the salary to match what the other law clerk is making. At some point, we, you know, the law clerks amongst the counties has some inequity. Our law clerk does require a JD, whereas the law clerks used in the public defenders and county attorney's office does not. But in the past, symbolically, it's always been a resolution that has set the salary as a set salary. So at this point, we would like to use that salary, and then we'll be working to try to possibly move that to a step plan at some point in the future.
Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
It's been moved in second. That we approve the annual salary. Is there, are there any, is there any discussion? Yes?
Jared, best wishes in your new role.
Thank you.
We've worked with you in different capacities over the, over many years. So you've got big shoes to fill. We've always had really strong court administrators from the district courts, so know that you do well and...
Still there.
Best wishes.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Is an appointment of Tim Schultz and Jocelyn Ludke to the Lincoln Lancaster County Air Pollution Advisory Board for terms to expire September 1, 2018.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in second. That we approve the appointment of Tim Schultz and Jocelyn Ludke. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. F is an addendum to county contract C-4-9 with Emeritus Investment Corporation for the financial consulting services with respect to financing debt of Lancaster County. The addendum renews the contract for a four-year term and adds the requirements to register and use a federal immigration verification system.
All right. Good morning. Dennis Meyer with the county budget and fiscal office. I've also got Scott Keen from Emeritus here this morning. This addendum to the contract is just to kind of set up another four-year period. We had went through an RFP back for the contract back in '04, and the way that it has worked over the years is that the city of Lincoln, the PBC, the county, we all kind of worked together on quite a few different bond issuances and stuff like that. So we have, over the years, just kind of kept this contract in place because Emeritus works with all three of us, and it just seems to make sense. And this would just give us another four-year period. The city of Lincoln just updated theirs, so we're pretty close to being on the same page with that. I'll also turn it over to Scott, and he can, he can address any items he wants to.
Thanks, Dennis. I don't have much to add. Scott Keen with Emeritus Investment Corp. Obviously, we're today just to ask for the extension of the contract. The county, as you know, has not issued any debt directly since 2004 and currently has no debt outstanding and no current plans for debt. So even though there are no contemplated financings, we've always made ourselves available to consult with county on possible financings and options, and would appreciate the opportunity to do that in the future as well. And having this contract in place allows us to do that.
And I'll just make one more comment on that, you know. Even though right now, we don't have any debt out there, as I mentioned earlier, with the PBC, the PBC is the one that tends to work with the bond issuances right now, and we are still heavily involved in that. So when a PBC issue is done, I will be, you know, I am sitting at the table with, you know, all of the subdivisions along with Emeritus. So it just makes sense to have a contract out there because the closeness that we work as a group.
Larry?
Well, I'd just like to echo those sentiments. We've got a longstanding relationship with Emeritus, and I want to emphasize to the rest of this board, it isn't just when we needed to do an issue, but the service in between and the advice, and when it's time to do a refinance and things like that. And so you've given us excellent service in the future, and I'm sure you will in the, in the past, and you will in the future. And with that, I would move approval of the extension of the contract.
Second.
It's moved in second. That we approve this addendum for the extension. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Avery?
Abstain owing to a potential conflict of interest.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries four yes, one abstention.
Thank you very much.
G is a recommendation from the purchasing department and a county engineer to award a purchase order to NMC for the purchase of two 12M3 motor graders. Based on the lowest lifecycle cost of each unit, pricing is based on the NGPA contract number 032515 with a 33% discount on all items. The total cost accounting for both units is $417,433.56.
Pam Damon, Lancaster County Engineer. So these are two motor graders that I put in my budget last year, and I talked to you about how I was trying to get the overall lifecycle of these machines down. And in particular, I talked about the cost that we were putting into these machines as they were nearing in between the 15- and 20-year mark. So we looked at these machines. These machines will replace two machines that are 1998 motor graders that have 22,600 hours and 24,600 hours approximately, which is a lot of hours for the type of use that we're doing.
Bill?
I'm glad to hear you say that you're doing life cost averaging, or whatever we call it these days. That was an issue that came before the legislature a couple of years ago. And as I recall, it was NMC that was most interested in this, because they sell a particularly durable product, but it may be slightly more expensive. But over the life of the product, there is a savings. This 33% discount, did that come from NMC, or how did you arrange that?
I can address that part of it. Bob Walla, purchasing agent. So what we did is, there were two cooperative contracts that had both Caterpillar and John Deere on it. One was for the state of Nebraska. One was NJPA, which is National Joint Powers Association. It's a national cooperative. And so what we did is, rather than just take one and say that's what we're going to go with, we decided to do a cross-the-board comparison to get the best value from those cooperatives. And this is something that we are doing more on a regular basis, because there are a lot more cooperatives, and more companies are with multiple cooperatives than they used to be. It used to be that there was just one contract, and that's what you selected for them. Now, there's multiple ones to pick from. So 33% that was listed with NJPA, that's the, that's the bid price that they gave to the entity that issued the original bid through them. And so that was off of everything that was required in the specifications that we sent there. On the other hand, the Murphy Tractor one that we used, their best pricing was from the state of Nebraska contract, which they don't specifically list a percentage, but they list a price, and then they put all of their equipment underneath at the options. So there are different ways that cooperatives are put together, and in this case, they were completely different. But yet, the overall pricing, as we put it into that formula for lifecycle, gave us a final cost over the 23,390 hours that were put in for the life of this, of these, both of these units.
And I would just like to add that Commissioner Avery, I know when you were at the legislature that you worked on this lifecycle cost as a selection, and it really does make a big deal for us. We did look, I mean, it was extensive calculations, pages long, looking at air filters and overall maintenance, and to boil all that together, it was really the first time, I think, our office has gone through that to this extent. And so in the end, this study and this purchase does make a dramatic difference to our taxpayers.
Deb and then Larry.
What will happen to the units that they are replacing? Are we able to sell those? Or...
The cost includes a trade-in for those two units. That's why the price is different from one to the other.
Okay. Larry?
That was just going to be the essence of my comments, too. And for this board, it's been, I've watched this over the years, and we've had Champions, we've had John Deere's, we've had a lot of other ones. But please look at that. There's a $52,000 trade-in allowance for that old cat, that 140H. Caterpillar has really got a good reputation for durability and long life. So at the end of this lifecycle, they're still worth something. And then also they're watching the cost of the repairs. And you've got a five-year, the 7,500 premier warranty that's included. That's worth a lot to you, too. I mean, these things are expensive. If they do go down and they're willing to put their name on the line for five years, that they'll take care of it. So I think purchasing in the engineering department has made a good purchase here. And yes, it's a lot of money, even with the discounts. Why, we're talking about $208,000 per machine. But when you, what do we have? About 20-some of...
23.
23 machines. You've got to start replacing them all, so that they don't come all do at once. So I think that's a good trade. I'd move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. That we approve this, oh, excuse me.
Just one more comment. Basically, the use of the lifecycle formula that we have did come from the state of Nebraska's formula and worked well for this. And that will be the basis of how we will be working with heavy equipment like this, with the engineer moving into the future as well.
Todd?
So to follow up on that, what would be the useful life of equipment like this?
18 years, I think, is what 23,390 hours is listed out as.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, it's been moved in second. That we approve this recommendation. Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
How do you tell who gets the new units?
Well, as I've spoke with you before, there's some of our shops where the new units don't fit, which is unfortunate. So that plays into it a little bit. But in general, we try to replace the oldest units. The employees really do love being in these units, because they're ergonomically designed differently now. They don't have a steering wheel, so we do have some training, because you have to learn to drive with joysticks. But it's a lot easier on their shoulders and their arms and their backs. And so it makes a big difference to the employees, too.
I'm sure it does.
H is a recommendation from the purchasing department and a county engineer to award a purchase order to Sid Dillon Ford using the state of Nebraska contract 14653 bracket C for four, 2017, Ford F-250 AWD XLT Extended Cab Pickup Trucks. The total amount of the order is $122,160.
Pam Damon, Lancaster County Engineer. These are trucks that were asked for in our budget. I explained how we cycle the trucks down. So we buy for the district supervisors, and then we kind of have a shuffling of the vehicles. These four vehicles, with these three vehicles, we will drop four off the bottom of our fleet. The four vehicles that will be dropped off are a 1996 with 160,000 miles, a 2001 with 177,000 miles, a 2004 with 173,000 miles, and a 2004 with 207,000 miles. So I think that brings to mind that we are using these. Those four vehicles, in this case, will go to auction.
Move approval. Second.
It's been moved in second. That we approve the purchase order to Sid Dillon Ford. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Hudson?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero. Four I is a memorandum of understanding between United States Marshal Service and Lancaster County on behalf of the Lancaster County Sheriff's Office to participate in the Violent Offender Task Force to investigate and apprehend local, state, and federal fugitives.
Good morning. Terry Wagner, County Sheriff. You may have remembered, or you may remember that we just signed one of these MOUs, I think in August, Dave, is that right? And basically, they added a clause about less-than-lethal use of force policy, that they wanted to make sure our policy was similar to the Fed's policy, and that we incorporated that, and so on and so forth. So that really is the only change in this MOU, and it's the reason why they need to have it re-signed and so forth.
Move approval.
Second.
Moved in second. That we approve the memorandum of understanding. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Can I have six new patrol cars?
Sure.
Okay.
No, no.
What, what, what was that?
Pushing you up.
J is a contract with United Parcel Service, Inc., using NASPO Value Point Contract MA065, state of Nebraska contract number 7464204, to provide small package delivery services. Term of the contract shall be effective upon the execution through November 27, 2020. Pricing will be pursuant to state of Utah's NASPO Value Point and United Parcel Service contract. Cost of county is not to exceed $2,500 per year for a total of $10,000 for the term of the contract.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in second. That we approve this contract with United Parcel Service. Any discussion? Please call the roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hudson?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilton?
Yes.
Amundson? Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
K is a grant contract with the Board of Regents on behalf of the University of Nebraska-Lincoln in an amount of $96,059 to provide funding for the Family Treatment Drug Court Track Program. Term of contract is from October 1st, 2016 through September 30th, 2019.
Good morning. Sarah Hoyle, Director of Lincoln Lancaster Human Services. This contract is from a grant that Judge Hydeman spoke to you about a couple of months ago. It's a federal grant that we received. We were one of under 10 localities to receive an expansion grant for the Family Treatment Drug Court. If you recall, the Family Treatment Drug Court is a court that for youth who have open 3A cases, abuse and neglect cases, in our family drug, in our family court. And basically, this program provides for a longer supervision of these clients. It provides for more treatment services, more immediate treatment services is what this funding is particularly allowing for. Under this specific contract, it allows for the Nebraska Resource Project for Vulnerable Young Children through the University of Nebraska-Lincoln to evaluate the program. They are familiar with this program. They've been involved with this particular drug court from its inception. Specifically, they will review case files, they will participate in family drug court meetings, and they will also conduct interviews with participants for the quality assurance piece. So we're excited to have them on board. We want to make sure that the programs that we're providing to our families and kids are evidence-based and this is a mechanism to do that.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in second, in second that we approve this grant contract with the Board of Regents. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Four L is withdrawal of the following Lancaster County Board of Commissioners' agenda item that have been, that has previously been placed on hold. This is an agreement with Roca Berry Farm authorizing Roca Berry Farm to apply magnesium chloride to those portions of South 38th Street. And Roy Street is designated in Exhibit A to the agreement. The term of this agreement is two years from the date. This agreement is executed by both parties.
I move withdrawal.
Second.
Moved in second that we approve the withdrawal of the, of this agenda item. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
M is an amendment to county contract C dash 13 dash 602 with Waste Connections in Nebraska for waste and recyclable collection services. The estimated expenditure for this contract will be increased by $318.75 per month for the remainder of the contract term with a revised total amount of $88,825.
Bob Walla, purchasing agent, I'm going to ask that the board hold this until their next meeting as I need to look into the amount that's being requested for the increase.
Okay. Larry?
And I'd concur with that because I've got a whole bunch of questions. One thing, the 4.5% increase and why this is the county's responsibility. And if it is strictly for sludge, those of people that apply it on their land are already paying for that sludge. So I think this needs to really be looked into.
Okay.
I would move that we put it on hold.
Second.
Okay, it's been moved in second that we put this amendment on hold. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
N is an amendment to county contract C dash 15 dash 623 with Cash Money 24/7 LLC providing automated teller machine services. The amendment renews the contract from December 8th, 2016 through December 7th, 2017.
Move approval?
Second.
Moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Cash Machine 24/7. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
O is an amendment to county contract C dash 14 dash 9 with Rickstein Recognition for the Annual Supply of Trophies, Plagues, Awards, and Promotional Items. The amendment renews the contract from January 7th, 2017 through January 6th, 2018. The estimated cost to county is not to exceed $3,000.
Move approval.
Second.
It's moved in, moved in second that we approve this amendment to the county contract with Rickstein Recognition. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number five is our consent items. Receive and place on file the sheriff's office report for November 2016.
Move approval of the consent item?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the consent item. Please call a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number six is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county business, none agenda may do so at this time.
Ratified by the requisite number of states in 1933, Amendment 20, Section 1 directs, "The terms of the President and Vice President shall end at noon on the 20th day of January." Some are excited going forward. I also, but not in a good way. The number of times I have spoken at, at this microphone beginning two and a half years ago is above 60. I traveled some well-lighted paths and some, well, not so much. Public comments offered here today will be valedictory, a farewell of sorts with reservations. My main message, I think, is and has been budget matters, spending matters. A budget drives spending or spending drives a budget. For a public board body or commission, both budget and spending is built on taxes. For a political subdivision in Nebraska, the tax is mostly or entirely from real property. People are grumpy about taxes, more so property tax. By law, you are allowed to pick my pocket to fund county operations. And if I resist this pickpocketry, by law, I, I can be punished. I ask you not spend money you do not have and I ask you not spend money I do not have. Show me a person that likes, really likes to pay taxes and I will show you a person in need of competent psychiatric help. But here's the thing, I recognize that taxes are an essential obligation of citizenship for my own safety sake. Citizens expect taxes will be well and wisely spent. The road to well and wisely goes through this board. Most people see silliness in budgets. I do. You cannot be all things to all people at all times. There are limits. There is a fine line between stroking the goose that lays a gold egg and choking the goose. At times, I don't know which side of that line I am on. You and I are not enemies, but every taxing authority needs someone like me, an agnostic, a skeptic, who will, from time to time, stand at a microphone to say, "What were you thinking?" Do you ever stop? Just stop and listen to yourself. Alas, perhaps the fault lies not in our stars, but in ourselves. Most citizens have an imperfect understanding of government. Government is some nameless, faceless something, unapproachable and far removed, like the great Oz. Finally, within the category citizen, taxpayer, owner, I have focused on two subgroups, the annuitant and the owner, owners of average value residential property in Lancaster County. For the annuitant, i.e. fixed incomer, think a friend, a neighbor, a church member, a relative by blood or marriage. The cost of living adjustment, i.e. COLA, has averaged .9% per annum for the last nine years. In calendar year 2016, the value of average residential property in Lancaster County is $164,500. That owner will pay $458 tax dollars for county operations. Those dollars begin private. There will be a new face on this board in CY 2017. Thank you. I wish that person well. I wish this board well. I will soon discover what it feels like to walk a mile in your shoes. Democracy is serious business and raucous and at times wildly unpredictable and amusing. Ain't democracy beautiful? Be safe. Glad tidings and joy at this time of year.
Thank you, Gary.
Yes.
Well, I'd just like to say, Gary, that's one of the reasons we held that 4.5% increase for further investigation. And, you know, 4.5% doesn't sound like much, but it amounts in this case to $88,825 to the county. And so when we're not sure of something or we need a thorough explanation why that should increase. So maybe sometimes you think you get up here and you're not doing any good, but we're listening to you.
Next is number seven announcements. Due to the holidays, the Lancaster County Board of Commissioners will not meet on Thursday, December 22nd, Tuesday, December 27th, or Thursday, December 29th, 2016. The next regularly scheduled meeting will be held on Tuesday, January 3rd, 2017 at 9:00 a.m. in Room 112 with the county city building with the Board of Equalization immediately following. County Commissioners can reach 402-441-7447 or commish@lancaster NE.gov. The Lancaster County Board of Commissioner meeting is broadcast live and is rebroadcast on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Saturdays on 5C TV, cable channel five. In addition, the meeting may be viewed on the internet at lancaster NE.gov under 5C TV, video on demand, or 5C TV on YouTube.
Move adjournment.
Second.
Moved in second that we adjourn. Please call a roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Board of Commissioners meeting is adjourned and let's move on to the Board of Equalization.
A copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is located on the wall at the rear of the hearing room. Additionally, a copy of all written material to be discussed at today's open meeting is available from the county clerk's staff. The material can also be viewed on the county's website at lancaster NE.gov. Agenda item one are minutes. Approval of the minutes at the Board of Equalization meeting held on Tuesday, December 13th, 2016.
Move approval?
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the minutes of the meeting held on Tuesday, December 13th. Any corrections? Please call a roll.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number two, additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls.
Move approval of the additions and deductions to the tax rule, assessment rolls.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve the additions and deductions to the tax assessment rolls. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number three is a public hearing for motor vehicle tax exemption applications. And this is for the corporation of the residing bishop of the Church of Jesus Christ of Latter-day Saints and Nebraska Lutheran Campus Ministry Corporation.
Okay, this is a public hearing and I will open the public hearing for comments. And seeing no one coming forward, close the public hearing.
Next is number four, action on motor vehicle tax exemption applications.
I move approval.
Second.
It's moved in second that we approve these tax exemption applications. Any discussion? Please call a roll.
Shore?
Yes.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.
Number five is public comment. Those wishing to speak on items relating to county Board of Equalization business, none agenda may do so at this time.
Move adjourn.
Second.
It's moved in second that we adjourn. Please call a roll.
Wilchun?
Yes.
Avery?
Yes.
Hutkins?
Yes.
Shore?
Yes.
Amundson?
Yes.
Motion carries five to zero.